All right, good evening. I'd like to call the Zoning Board of Appeals for Tuesday, July 19th, 2022 to order. Will the city call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Foe.
Here.
Ms. Lesney. Mr. Friedman.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Libbit.
Here.
Mr. Havas.
Here.
Ma'am, you have a quorum to conduct business.
Thank you. Are there any communications?
None at this time.
Okay, so let's move into the public hearing. For those of you who haven't joined us, let me briefly describe how we conduct business. Basically, the city will call the case by the case number. They'll read a brief description of the case. We ask the appellant to step to the podium. There's a sign-in sheet if you wouldn't mind signing in with your name and address. Then we ask you to explain to us what you're asking for and why. Then the city will read a findings of fact. We'll ask you to agree with those facts or add any other facts at that time. Then we will hear the staff recommendation on the case. Then we'll open it up to public comment. So if there's anybody here from the public wishing to speak on a case, that would be your opportunity to step forward, state your name and address, and speak to the case. And then we will close public comment and turn it over to the board to deliberate on that case, make a decision, and then move on to the next case. Okay? So will the city call the first case, please?
Yes, ma'am. First case is case number 2217. The City of Southfield Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing regarding the appellant. Simon Kresh is requesting the following waiver from the board: "To erect a six-foot privacy fence beyond the side of the house along the double-frontage yard permitted, zero permitted, 15 proposed. The property is located on the south side of Sherfield Place between Prairie Drive and Ridge Cliff Drive at 16115 Sherfield Place, Sidwell Parcel 2424-454-003, Zoned R2, Single Family Residential. This appeal is to Chapter 45, Article 4, Section 5.37-1, Paragraph C, Subsections 1 and D, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance."
All right, thank you. Is the appellant here? Okay, please step to the microphone. And if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Shmuel Kresh, the son of Simon Kresh.
Great, thank you.
You can call me Sam.
Okay.
And 16115 Sherfield.
Perfect, thank you. And can you describe to us what you're asking for and why?
Yes. So, ask number one is to line the fence on our property line, which goes 15 feet beyond the house. The reason we would like to have that, just to be able to take advantage of the entire property and utilize it to the best of our abilities. We have a bunch of kids, and we want to be able to have the enclosure in the back to be able to have, you know, a safe area for them to be spending time instead of in the front or on the side. And this would allow for as big of an enclosure as possible.
Okay.
That's component number one. There are a few other components.
Yeah, keep going.
Okay, fine.
Yeah.
Component number two to the appeal is the front porch. We were given permission from building to enclose our porch to make it part of the house, which kind of left us without a porch. So we requested to have the same size porch in the front of our house. That's question number, that's request number two. Request number three is to each of our neighbors, both kitty corner and across Ridge Cliff, have a, an additional room in the back of their house, which is used as kind of like a suite for elderly parents and the like. And we wanted to create one of those as well. We didn't have one with the initial 1963 build. We would like to put one there as well.
Okay. All right, and...
Madam Chair, if I may?
Sure.
So the, the legal notice did not include three of those items.
Okay.
We'll clear that up here when we read the findings of fact.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add at this point?
That, the only other thing that I would like to add, and I had spoken to Mr. Wilkins about, is on this plan, it shows the, the fence going eight feet away from the edge of the garage, basically the midway point of the addition. So there's 16 feet, eight feet. We potentially would move that closer to the garage. The driveway is right there. However, the driveway is very, very short because Southfield graciously added a sidewalk, which we love, but it basically makes it impossible to put a minivan there. So we're going to be adding a, a roundabout anyway in the front, which we're going to be using for our cars. And this would basically just allow us to go much closer to this driveway, which won't even be used for cars.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the finding of fact, please?
Yes, ma'am. Findings of fact for case 2217. The appellant, Shmuel Kresh, representing the owner, Simon Kresh, is requesting the following waivers from the board: "A 7.9-feet variance to the front yard setback to construct a covered front porch; 40 feet required; 32.1 feet proposed. A 10-foot variance to the side yard setback to construct a one-story addition; 25 feet required; 15 feet proposed. To erect a six-foot privacy fence beyond the side of the house along a double-frontage yard; zero permitted; 15 feet proposed. To increase the lot coverage by 1 percent; 25 percent allowed; 26 percent proposed. The property is located on the south side of Sherfield Place between Prairie Drive and Ridge Cliff Drive at 16115 Sherfield Place, Sidwell Parcel 2424-454-003, Zoned R2, Single Family Residential. The appeal is to Chapter 45, Article 22, Section 5.193, and Chapter 45, Article 4, Section 5.37-1, Paragraph C, Subsections 1 and D, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. The surrounding properties to the north, southeast, and west are Zoned R2, Single Family Residential, and are developed with single-family dwellings in the Southfield Village Estate subdivision. Field inspection reveals that the surrounding dwellings' exteriors are mostly brick with a mixture of various siding materials. The majority of the dwellings in the surrounding area are one- and two-story, with a few one-and-a-half-story singles, and single-story dwellings mixed in. Most of the dwellings in this area have attached garages. The homes in the surrounding area were built in the 1960s and range from 1,200 square feet to 2,500 square feet. Along both sides of Sherfield Place to the east and west, all of the homes have similar conforming setbacks. Many of the homes in the surrounding area are conforming in setback requirements. The subject home was built in 1963. It is 2,367 square feet. Two-story, single-family residence on a full basement with a two-car attached garage constructed with brick and siding exterior. The site is approximately .185 acres. The appellant proposing to construct a non-conforming 336-square-foot, one-story addition to the rear of the residence, a non-conforming 126-square-foot, one-story covered porch to the support, with two support columns to the front of the residence, a non-conforming six-foot-high privacy fence. The appellant is seeking four waivers: 7.9 feet of front yard setback; 40 feet required; 32.1 feet proposed to construct a covered front porch with no enclosed sides; a 10-foot variance to the side yard setback to construct a one-story addition; 25 feet required; 15 feet proposed; to erect a six-foot privacy fence beyond the side of the house along a double-frontage yard; zero permitted; 15 proposed; and to increase the lot coverage by 1 percent; 25 percent allowed; 26 percent proposed.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to add at this point?
I did collect 10 signatures from neighbors on Ridge Cliff, Sherfield, Prairie, and Goldwin, all in my subdivision, who all said, "Let this document serve as recognition and approval of the plans of our neighbors at 16115 Sherfield Road. We have no objection, and we'd be happy to see our neighbors move forward with these plans."
Okay, thank you. If you'd like to bring those to Mr. Friedman, we can receive them. Thank you. Okay, perfect. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
If I may through the chair, if I may through the chair, hi.
Oh, hi.
Hi, I'm Jeffa Plan, and nice to see you this evening. Just got a quick question. The appellant had mentioned about putting in a circle drive, so that is not before the board this evening, right?
Correct.
Because there is a requirement for 65 percent of landscaping for the total front and side yard, so I just want to make sure that that is not before the board this evening.
We got to approve.
That you realize that you would have to come back if you exceed that 65 percent.
Yeah, I, I had already dealt with that with engineering.
Oh, you've already, okay, got it. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks. Sorry, I voiced, voiced from somewhere, not used to staff being over there. Thank you. All right, will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is for favorable, favorable consideration of the following waivers for a 7.9-foot of front yard setback; 40 feet required; 32.1 proposed to construct a covered front porch with no enclosed sides; a 10-foot variance to the side yard setback to construct a one-story addition; 25 feet required; 15 feet proposed; to erect a six-foot privacy fence beyond the side of the house along a double-frontage yard; zero permitted; 15 feet proposed; to increase the lot coverage for 1 percent; 25 percent allowed; 26 percent proposed, with the following conditions: that all new construction meets the requirements of the 2015 Michigan Residential Building Code; that the appellant secures all permits required for the proposed construction; that the roof over the porch be supported by two columns, and the porch must remain open and cannot be enclosed. The proposed six-foot privacy fence meets all of the other requirements of the fence ordinance. The fence shall not create a visual obstruction for vehicular or pedestrian traffic. This recommendation is based on the following: the open area of the front yard will still be maintained if no enclosing walls are built underneath the porch covering. Reduction in front yard setback is only for a small portion of the front of the dwelling. The 10-foot reduction of side yard setback does not increase the existing legal non-conforming setback of the existing residence. The proposed additions and fence are in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties. Visibility will be maintained by the fence location approximately 15 feet back from the driveway, and the proposed fence will not interfere with or be objectional from the standpoint of traffic safety. The increase in lot coverage is minor and is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area. It would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add at this point? Okay. So we'll open public comment. If there's anyone from the public who's here to speak on this case, now is your opportunity to step forward and state whatever you'd like to the board. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board.
Jody, sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry, yeah.
There, I did place an opinion from the public on each of your, on the counter. It's for Noach Klein or Noah Klein.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Friedman, would you read that?
Both of these?
Yes, why don't we do both?
Okay. We have a letter from Noah Klein on this case, "To whom it may concern regarding the proposed zoning waiver case 2217 is requested by Simon Kresh for the property described as 16115 Sherfield Place. I offer the following in support of the request: Chapter 1 of the Michigan Residential Code, Section R101.3, offers clarity as to the intent of the code." It reads, "The purpose of the code is to establishment and requirements for safeguard of the public safety, health, and general welfare through affordability. Article 23, Section 5.198 of Chapter 45, Zoning Ordinance, Section C, makes room for customization of building plans, even when those plans may conflict with stated zoning regulations. Variance is to authorize upon appeal a variance from the strict application of the provisions of this chapter where the strict application of the regulations enacted would result in practical difficulties to or undue hardship upon the owner of such property. It is therefore clear from both the building codes and the city ordinance that the intent of the law is to promote the building of betterment of the homeowner, the city, and the community. Based on the request by Mr. Kresh, the privacy fence serves only to provide the private area for the backyard of the property. This yard is currently open for public viewing and limits the privacy of the occupants and thus the safety of the children playing in the yard. This violates modesty tsnia that is so primary to the local heavily orthodox Jewish community. Based on the aforementioned, it is the homeowner's request, it is this homeowner's request that the board, in fulfilling their duties, has set forth in Section 5.198, approve the waivers. The intent of the law is best fulfilled, is best, is best fulfilled when a homeowner is permitted to make necessary upgrades to the residence without causing undue harm to the community. This homeowner should not be made to suffer simply because their property is a corner lot. There can be no better way of fulfilling the intent of the law other than to approve this request." Noah Klein, who... And additionally, there's a letter, "To whom it may concern, please let this document serve as our recognition and approval of the plans of our neighbors at 16115 Sherfield Road, Southfield, Michigan 48075. Two, one, build a fence around the back of the property, which extends as far as the sidewalk. Two, build a front porch. And three, build an extension in the back of their home. We have no objection. We'd be happy to see our neighbors move forward with these plans. Saul Weingarten, 16050 Sherfield. Benjamin Weintraub, 16137 Sherfield. Leah Cohn, 16069 Sherfield. David Cohn, 15938 Goldwin Place. Tamara Sternheim, 16120 Sherfield Place. Esther Frye, 16160 Sherfield Place. And I cannot read the four remaining names here, but it's resident at 25236 Prairie Drive, a resident at 25206 Prairie Drive, resident at 25247 Ridge Cliff Drive, and somebody at 25275 Ridge Cliff Drive.
Great, thank you very much. Do you want to continue with your thoughts?
I have no issues with any of these waivers. The fence obviously is of the type that we, we see all the time in a, in a corner lot. I have no problem with them going that far. And, you know, the, the addition at the back of the house, we've seen similar things like that as well. And the porch is a little more unusual, but I think we did just give a waiver around the corner from this on Kingshire for somebody who was doing the, the exact same thing. So I have no issues with any of it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, I do, I have no problem with any of these requests regarding the addition. It doesn't go past the side boundary of the house. The six-foot privacy fence going beyond the side of the house, we've already seen this case several times. It's a corner lot, and it needs to acquire some more property for privacy. And the setback for the covered porch, to me, that's, that's aesthetically, I would, I would put a porch uncovered with no sidewalls. That's, you know, if they're compromising their, their car slots, that's not a big deal for eight feet, whatever it is. So I approve, I would approve all four of these requests, including the 1 percent coverage increase.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Havas?
I don't have any problems with this request either. I mean, they all make sense to me, so I agree with the city's recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Libbit?
I support all of the requests.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I would just say that it seems like a lot, but it really isn't. What you're asking for is actually fairly minor, and as my colleagues have said, you know, things that we have often approved. We've, you know, even discussed, you know, conversations with city council in regards to this corner lot situation that's, you know, the fence ordinance doesn't quite agree with. And, you know, it is, it's, it's a challenge to abide to the strict fence ordinance when you do have that corner lot. So, who would like to make?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I'd like to address the board. I just want to point out that the appellant has asked to move the fence closer to the garage, and I've spoke to the appellant about this, that, and this creates a visual block from anyone coming down the sidewalk or the driveway. They wouldn't be able to see anyone coming. The proposed location is, is probably as close as we can get to that driveway without being, becoming a hazard to traffic and pedestrians.
Okay, yeah, and we've often kept that clearance.
Correct.
So that there is that, that line of sight.
But I know he had mentioned this during his opening statement.
Okay, but we're approving what's presented, being presented to us. Okay.
Can I be able to respond to that?
Sure.
So the only thing that I, that I would say, and at this point, it is, it is, it is at eight feet, but because we really can't use that spot anyway, we would be requesting a four-foot difference to be able to just put a, a door there when we do create that extension. And, I mean, we're going to be having so many spots on our circular drive. They're really unusable because of our, I mean, we're very happy with the driveway, but the sidewalk, because it's such a wide sidewalk, it really doesn't even fit. I mean, the minivan does not fit at all. We wouldn't be putting there anyway. And it'll be much more convenient once we have the roundabout. So I don't, I don't see a...
Yeah, I think there's just a line of sight issue. So whether you intend to use it right now, the waivers are for the property forever.
Okay.
And so that, we always kind of keep that line of sight concept, so that when somebody's, you know, pulling into or pulling out of that, we don't want anybody in danger until it's really a safety issue.
So is there any way of, let's say, creating a diagonal?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Mm-hmm.
There's a couple of options that come to mind. You could remove the driveway completely.
Oh, interesting.
And that would remove that parking space or any automobiles from being in that, in that area, which he's saying that we're not going to use, but that doesn't mean somebody else may want to just turn around in their driveway. Or...
I mean, we have seen a diagonal.
And the other issue, the other issue is that, as, as Mr. Spence has pointed out, that they have to get approval for this circular driveway and maintain that, and that may be denied.
Yeah.
Based on the fact that they don't meet the minimum requirements for landscaping, based on whatever that design is going to be. So there's, there's things that will complicate this. There's options to get, you know, to move that fence closer to that driveway. But again, a visual block would be the issue as, as...
And then he can work with the building department. We can approve the fence as proposed, and then, you know, if you want to reconfigure it, that would be...
If he wants to do the diagonal thing, he would need a waiver then.
Well, we, we're giving the waiver for it to come to...
Feet, feet.
...a certain point, and if you diagonal off of that, that wouldn't, that would be less than our waiver, right? Less than what we're granting.
Correct. So I can, I can work with the appellant as far as the visual block issue, and, but I can't guarantee that I can meet his, his, what he's, he's asking for tonight as far as...
Yeah, so I don't think we could go to four feet, but...
I know your number, so. For better or for worse.
Okay. I'm sorry.
So what we would be approving is what is written.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct. So, okay.
I can.
Thank you.
In regard to case number 22-17, the appellant, Shmuel Kresh, representing the owner, Simon Kresh, is requesting the following waivers from the board: "A 7.9-foot variance from the front yard setback to construct a covered front porch; 40 feet required; 32.1 feet proposed. A 10-foot variance to the side yard setback to construct a one-story addition; 25 feet required; 15 feet proposed; and to erect a six-foot privacy fence beyond the side of the house along a double-frontage yard; zero permitted; 15 feet proposed. To increase the lot coverage by 1 percent; 25 percent allowed; and 26 proposed. The property is located on the south side of Sherfield Place between Prairie and Ridge Cliff Drives at 16115 Sherfield Place, Sidwell Parcel 2424-454-003, Zoned R2, Single Family Residential." I move that we approve all four of the requested waivers, with the condition that the appellant secure all permits required for the proposed, proposed construction, and that the new construction meets the requirements of the 2015 Michigan Residential Building Code, and that the roof over the porch be supported by two columns, and the porch must remain open and, and not enclosed, and the proposed six-foot privacy fence meets all of the requirements of the fence ordinance, and that the fence not create a visual obstruction for vehicular or pedestrian traffic. This recommendation is based on the following: that the open area in the front yard will still be maintained if no enclosing walls are built underneath the porch, that the reduction in the front yard setback is only for a small portion of the front of the dwelling, the 10-foot reduction in side yard setback does not increase the existing legal non-conforming setback of the existing residence, and the proposed additions and fence are in keeping with the character of the surrounding area. It would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties. And that, and visibility will be maintained by the fence location approximately 15 feet back from the driveway, and the increase in lot coverage is minor in keeping with the character of the surrounding area.
Great, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, I think that was unanimous. So your request is granted, and we will move on to the next case.
Case number 2218. The city, the appellant, Erica N. Martin, is requesting the following waiver from the board to erect a four-foot fence beyond the side of the house along a double-frontage yard; zero permitted; 27 feet proposed. The property is located on the west side of Marshall Street between Judson Avenue and 13 Mile Road at 30706 Marshall Street, Sidwell Parcel 2412229013, Zoned R1, Single Family Residential. The appeal is to Chapter 45, Article 4, Sections 5.37-1, Paragraph C, Subsections 1 and D, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Great, thank you. Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
If you could both state your name and address for the record, please.
Erica Martin.
Merlin Martin.
Address is 30706 Marshall Street.
Perfect. And could you describe to us what you're asking for and why?
We are asking to replace an existing fence along our driveway. There's two sections. One section has been permitted already, but the, the section along the driveway has not, and I guess it's because it's along the driveway. But it's replacing, it's on the corner, so, and it, it is replacing an existing fence. It's not a privacy fence. It's only a four-foot aluminum fence. And we wanted to keep it enclosed because we have a dog, as well as for safety issues, since we are on the corner.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Yes, ma'am. Findings of fact for case 22-18. The appellant, Erica N. Martin, is requesting the following waiver from the board: "To erect a four-foot fence beyond the side of the house along a double-frontage yard; zero permitted; 27 feet proposed. The property is located on the west side of Marshall Street between Judson Avenue and 13 Mile Road at 30706 Marshall Street, Sidwell Parcel 2412229013, Zoned R1, Single Family Residential." This appeal is to Chapter 45, Article 4, Section 5.37-1, Paragraph C, Subsections 1 and D, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. The properties to the north and southeast and west are Zoned R1 and are developed with single-family dwellings in the Meadow Lons Gardens sub. Field inspections of the surrounding properties reveal the majority of homes are legal non-conforming in setbacks and lot coverage. Some of the homes in the area have legal non-conforming fences of wood or chain link. The owner of, is proposing to install a four-foot-high wrought iron style fence to replace a legal non-conforming chain link fence between the garage and the south property line. The fence ordinance requires the fence on a double-frontage lot to align with the side of the house and extend to the rear of the lot. The appellant is seeking a waiver of 27 feet beyond the side of the house between the garage and the south property line; zero permitted; 27 proposed, 27 feet proposed.
Perfect. Great, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to add at this point?
Uh, no, that would be...
I just want to say that the existing fence has been there for over 40 years. It doesn't obstruct the sight lining because the fence that it's perpendicular to sets back over 12 feet from the street. So I'm still in my driveway where I can see all the way to the corner on both ends.
Yeah.
It's not obstruction. It's obstructing sight in any way. And as you said, the fence is a see-through fence on you.
Right, yeah.
It's just updating the existing fence.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is for favorable consideration to install a four-foot-high wrought iron style fence 27 feet beyond the side of the house, with the following conditions: the fence must comply with all other fence requirements. This recommendation is based upon the following: the applicant is replacing an existing legal non-conforming fence with a four-foot-high wrought iron style fence. This strict application and reg, of, this regulation would result in practical difficulties to the owner of such property. The proposed fence is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area... The proposed fence is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties. Visibility will, will be maintained by the fence location approximately fifteen feet back from the street at the driveway. And the absence of, of a sidewalk, the proposed fence will not interfere with or be objectionable from the standpoint of traffic safety.
Okay, thank you. Um, anything else you'd like to add before we open public comment?
No.
Okay, feel free to stay right there or in the front row, um, and we will open public comment. So is there anyone from the public here to speak on this case? If so, this is your opportunity to step forward. And seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Uh, Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, I, this is obviously another case of, uh, why is this in front of us? But, um, I have no problem. I mean, this fence is not even going to be a privacy fence anymore. Four feet tall, it's just aesthetics to hold a dog in and, and have a boundary. I have no problem with it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Friedman?
I have no issues with the two, and I echo, uh, my colleague's statements.
Sounds good. Mr. Havas?
I don't have an issue either. I mean, it's just replacing the existing fence, so it's not changing much. I agree with it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Laver?
Beautification is always appreciated in our neighborhoods.
I agree. Your, your home is gorgeous. I would love to move in.
Thank you. Or you can come to my house.
Spend a little time, because you clearly spend a lot of time on your home.
Thank you.
So it's lovely. Um, I also have no, no issue or no concern with this. I do wonder, though, as we're talking about line of sight issues coming out of Judson onto Greenfield, that is awful.
That building right on the corner, yeah.
Yes.
It is.
I bet you find other ways out of the neighborhood, because I would not take that.
Yeah, I never go out that way.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Yeah.
That's rough. So, okay, sorry. Mr. Rogers, would you like to make a question?
Yes, I will. In regards to case twenty-two dash eighteen, the appellant Erica Martin is requesting the following waiver from the board to erect a four-foot fence beyond the side of the house along a double-frontage yard, zero permitted, zero feet permitted, twenty-seven feet proposed. Property is located on the west side of Marshall Street between Judson Avenue and Thirteen Mile Road at three-zero-seven-zero-six Marshall Street, Sidwell Parcel, twenty-four-twelve, two-two-nine, zero-one-three, Zoned R-one, Single Family Residential. I make a motion to, uh, for, to, uh, for favorable consideration of this waiver to install a four-foot-high wrought iron, wrought iron, no, wrought iron style fence twenty feet beyond the side of the house. The fence must comply with all other fence requirements. I make this motion based upon the following. The applicant is replacing an existing legal non-conforming fence with a four-foot-high wrought iron style fence. The strict application of the regulations would result in practical difficulties to the owner of such property. The proposed fence is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties. Visibility will be maintained by the fence location approximately fifteen feet back from the street at the driveway and the absence of a sidewalk. The proposed fence will not interfere with or be objectionable from the standpoint of traffic safety.
Great, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, your request is granted. Thank you. Um, just work with the building department to get your fence permit.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Uh, will the city call the next case, please?
Yes, ma'am. Case number twenty-two dash nineteen, the appellant David Tesler is requesting the following from the board. A variance for number of wall signs and wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare. Number of wall signs allowed, one, multiple proposed. Number of wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare, zero allowed, multiple proposed. The property is located on the west side of Greenfield Road between Judson Road and Thirteen Mile Road at three-zero-seven-three-five Greenfield Road, Sidwell Parcel, two-four, one-two, two-three-zero, zero-two-four, Zone B-three, General Business. This appeal is to Sections eight-point-five-nine, Subsections one A and B, Article ten, or Article eleven, Chapter ninety-nine of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Hi, good evening.
Hi, how are you?
If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
David Tesler, two-three-zero-six-three Nottingham Drive, Beverly Hills, Michigan, four-eight oh-two-five.
Okay, thank you, and if you could explain to us, uh, what you're asking for and why?
Sure, if it pleases the board, I prepared a pre-written statement. If I can present. Thank you. Honorable board members, Capri Pizza has been proudly serving Southfield families for over sixty-two years. Capri Pizza was in the delivery room the day I was born, and my kids are fourth-generation customers. We're excited to extend the Capri brand with our Zabot automated pizza machines. Zabot is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to usher in the next big technological breakthrough in the U.S. and do it right here in Southfield. I currently own and operate several companies in Southfield, where I also own two commercial buildings and lease additional space. Southfield is known, excuse me, as an epicenter of business and innovation. We want to further that notoriety on a national level by headquartering Zabot in all of its operations here in Southfield. In the next twenty-four months, we plan to launch fifty Zabot machines in Michigan, Ohio, and Indiana. This will create dozens of jobs and allow us to lease and/or purchase and develop more real estate here in Southfield, where all pizza and food for the machines will be prepared and distributed. Our automated pizza solution, Zabot, is truly unique. The city planning and building department have graciously worked with us to make this a reality. We currently have the first machine in the entire country that will serve hot, traditional, and Detroit-style fresh pizza to patrons twenty-four-seven, and it's right here in Southfield. We can offer our products an affordable price for families and make sure that we continue to feed the community we love. We have this Zabot machine in place, but it must be labeled in a way that, labeled in a way that allows people to understand what it is and how to use it. Without descriptors and use instructions, this remarkable technology, technology is indistinguishable from a Goodwill Dropbox or ATM machine. We are requesting a variance to allow us to include identifying graphics and instructional verbiage on the machine per the attached mock-up we provided. Again, the city has been gracious enough to allow us to place the machine. To, to now deny us the ability to properly identify and provide instructions on the machine would be a disservice to the community. The machine itself is extraordinary and acceptable, exceptional in that it is cutting-edge technology with a proven track record in Europe. There, this is a chance to create millions of dollars in potential future wages, which will circulate in and have major impact on the local Southfield economy. Because of these extraordinary and exceptional cir- circumstances, the strict application of the zoning regulations would result in practical difficulties to and undue hardship upon our business. We are in a unique, unique position as the machine is required to have a setback from the street, I believe, a minimum of fifty feet. We have the machine setback over sixty feet from Greenfield Road. The building to the north of us has a setback, has no setback from the sidewalk, and therefore the machine is not visible from northbound traffic prior to driving parallel to the machine. And the same issue exists with the building on the south side of us. The machine in its current state is being confused with an ATM machine, and we're getting people who are driving into the parking lot thinking, in fact, it's an ATM, which creates confusion and makes it difficult for those looking to vi- visit the machine, and they'll have a hard time locating and identifying the machine. I feel our proposed identifying graphics alleviate traffic concerns, consumer confusion, and makes sure customers can properly and safely use the machine. I also understand there may be a concern about setting a precedent that would be outside of the spirit of the zoning ordinance. I implore you to consider the unique circumstances of the technology, setbacks, neighboring buildings, and positive future economic impact this will have on the great city of Southfield. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Great, thank you. Um, is there anything else you want to...
I don't think so.
That's good, okay.
There was a lot.
All right, that's fine. Um, will the city read the, uh, findings of fact, please?
Yes, ma'am. Findings of fact, case twenty-two dash nineteen, the appellant David Tesler is requesting the following from the board. A variance for, uh, number of wall signs, one allowed, multiple proposed. A wall sign not facing a major thoroughfare, zero allowed, multiple proposed. The property is located on the west side of Greenfield Road between, uh, Judson Road and Thirteen Mile Road at three-zero-seven-three-five Greenfield Road, Sidwell Parcel, two-four, one-two, two-three-zero, zero-two-four, Zoned B-three, General Business. This appeal is to Section eight-point-five-nine, Subsections one A and B, Article eleven, Chapter ninety-nine of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance. To the north of the property is Zone B-three, General Business, and appears vacant. To the east across Greenfield, uh, is the city of Berkeley occupied by two, uh, two-story apartment buildings. To the south, the property is Zone B-three, General Business, and is occupied by an insurance, insurance repair pros. To the west of the property is Zoned R-one, a single-family residential and developed with single-family homes. The subject property is Zone B-three, General Business, and is currently occupied by Capri Pizza. The site has one entrance and exit, uh, along Greenfield Road frontage. The survey of signage at the site reveals the following signs. One sixty-square-foot canopy-style wall sign, approximately thirty feet in length, facing a major thoroughfare, sixty feet, square feet allowed, sixty square feet existing. The appellant proposes to install a pizza vending machine in the parking lot with signage cover, covering the entire surface of all four sides.
Okay, thank you. Um, do you agree with those facts?
I do.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to add at this point?
Uh, my dad, I don't have letters from my neighbors. I didn't realize I could do that. But I have spoken to all the neighbors, both businesses on the side. I also own the business and the building two doors down, and they're all customers of ours, and nobody objected to that in speaking with them.
Okay, thank you. Uh, will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Yes, ma'am. Staff recommendation to deny the appellant's request for a variance for the number of wall signs, one allowed, multiple proposed. Signs not facing a major thoroughfare, zero allowed, multiple proposed. This recommendation is based on the following. Under Chapter ninety-nine, Article eleven, Section eight-point-three-three, Subsection thirty-four, the definition of a sign, I apologize, Article two, uh, Subsection eight-point-three-three, Subsection thirty-four, the definition of a sign is the use of any words, numerals, figures, devices, designs, or trademarks by which anything is made known, such as, such as to show an individual, firm, profession, business, product, or message, and visible to the general public. The graphics cover the entire surface of all four sides of the structure in Chapter ninety-nine, Article eleven, Section eight-point-five-nine, Subsection one. This is not allowed. The vending machine is not a separate business, it's an extension of the existing business, Capri Pizza.
Okay, thank you.
Can I comment on that?
Absolutely.
So it is a separate business. It's incorporated in the state of Michigan as Capri Smart Pizza, DBA Zabot. It has its own EIN number, it has its own employees. So that's the only fact that I would bring into account.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's open public comment. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this case? Again, now is your opportunity to step forward. And seeing none, we'll close public comment, um, and turn it over to the board. I have a few questions to start with, if nobody objects. So the, the signage doesn't light up, right?
It does not.
Okay, is there, you said it's twenty-four-seven, so is there lighting present?
So if you see, there's three lights on the front.
Okay, got it.
Which simply light up, so if you are using the machine, but it's not to light up signage.
It's all downward-facing lighting.
It's all downward-facing, correct.
Okay, is there any other lighting in your parking lot?
There is not.
No.
I mean, there's floodlights that light up the parking lot.
There is, okay.
Yeah, but those are existing and they weren't put in.
Just for safety.
Yes, correct.
Right, I mean, we, we don't have that many twenty-four-seven businesses.
Right, yeah.
Okay, that was my first question, and then, so, um, my second question was, is this a franchise? But it sounds like you own this business separately.
Correct. Yes.
Okay, so, um, I mean, this is a lot of signage, you recognize that.
And I have some, uh, alternatives, if that pleases the board.
Okay, that's what I wanted to ask. Is there a way to go, obviously you need instructions. I went to the machine, I didn't know what it was, and frankly, I, obviously I didn't try to use it, but, um, you need instructions. So at a minimum, right, instructions need to be present.
So if I could present, if it pleased the board, two alternatives?
Do you have multiple copies or just one?
I have multiple copies.
Okay.
Who do I hand these to?
How many do you have?
I have twelve.
Okay, well, start with the board, and then we can give it to the rest of the staff.
Madam Chair, if I may, address the board. I'd like to, uh, point out that this did go before the planning, uh, department and the location of these vending machines was approved.
Right.
And, uh, the only, the reason that we're here today is for the signage.
The signage, correct. And, okay, yep, and then I'll wait till you're back at the microphone for my last question. Now...
These are two separate options.
Okay, thank you.
I probably should let her remember them, but I think it's like, I'll actually...
Okay, no problem. All right, I'm going to call one-three robot and one-one-one robot. How's that sound? Um, Mr. Wilkins, were these shared with you?
Say that again?
Were these other options shared with you at all?
They were not.
No, okay, all right, that's fine.
These are not approved.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Okay, and then my last question at this time, um, is just, you mentioned that there's a, uh, plan for fifty to be installed in kind of the Midwest.
Yes.
Area. Um, are those locations designated at this point? Are there any others in Southfield? Is this the only one intended to be in Southfield?
So at this time, this is the only one that's been kind of, I'll call it booked for Southfield.
Okay.
We're currently in discussions with the airport, we're in discussion with a few universities, some of the automotive plants, some Home Depot outlots, since they've since gotten rid of their hotdog carts, which we all loved.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, I would say in and around, some of them will be similar locations to Capri, and some will be indoor placements as well.
Okay, so this is the first installed, um, machine at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, all right, who else? Mr. Friedman, you have questions?
I, I, I just find it hard to believe that, that the city was able to, was willing to approve the machines, but then has an issue with the fact that there's, uh, the sign. I mean, well, how is this not similar? I mean, the findings of fact refer to, uh, frontage signs, but, um, it seems to me this is similar, although it's not part of the business, to, um, sort of a drive-thru. And we do approve, uh, all the time.
Menu boards?
Menu boards, that, that are, that are often pretty busy. I mean, we, we like to make sure they're not visible from the street and things like that. But, but it seems to me, at least the instruction portion of this, of the signage here is, is very similar to a menu, uh, board. And, you know, so I, I mean, again, it is pretty busy, but, but, uh, I, I find it hard to believe that we're, we're just calling it all signage.
Well, that's just, I read the definition of sign.
No, I, I see the definition.
Because that's, that's very important. Uh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, if I may address. And, and the issue with this is, is that it's not, it's not a building. There's nothing in this, in the sign ordinance that talks about a vending machine. This is a vending machine, same as a Coca-Cola machine or an ice machine in front of a gas station. Would you allow, uh, gas stations to have signage all over their ice machine? Or, again, those are, those are, that's why we're here, is for the board to make this decision.
So there it is.
That's this...
It's not a building, the site doesn't require...
But that's my specific question, right? We allow, we, I, I believe Southfield would allow, uh, places to have a vending machine. It could say Coke on it. It could say, uh, or the ice machine say ice on it.
We, we would be here for the same reason. If there's somebody wanted, if it was approved, the location of a, of a vending machine, we would be here for the same reason, because it's additional signage. It, it says Coke all the way across the front of the vending machine.
So...
Facing the major thoroughfare, and it would be considered an additional sign.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that. So the, the zoning, businesses need a waiver for every vending machine?
Say it again?
So businesses need a, uh, uh...
Yes.
...waiver for every outdoor vending machine?
I, I think an ice...
They have to have approval from the planning department, and that may result in, the signage may result in, uh, be, taking it to the board for approval.
Okay, I was not aware of it. I haven't had one of those...
Yeah, we've never come across this. This is unique.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Do you have any other thoughts or questions at this point?
I don't have any, uh, you know, I don't have any questions. Uh, like I said, I, I think the, the, the original was pretty busy, and I'd like to see something busier. Is there a way? I would, is the city's issue that it's visible from the street? Would, would perhaps a, some sort of bare wall that, that blocks the street from, from the signage be more amenable to the city?
Um, those are all options that the board could allow. But the, the fact doesn't change that this is, uh, as per the ordinance, is not allowed.
And that's what we're here for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I, can I respond to that?
Yes.
I just think that, you know, being in the restaurant business, times are changing. We can't get employees, we close, you know, at nine o'clock, we can't find people to work for lunch. So we constantly have people coming to the pizzeria, that there's, there's just not a lot of options. My office is two doors down. We have nowhere to go for lunch. I've talked to policemen, firemen that say, hey, if we work overnight shifts and we start after nine, we don't eat until seven o'clock the next morning. So I think there is a need and a demand for this because of what's COVID has done to the restaurant industry. And I think it's unique and extraordinary, and times have changed. And I think, you know, we have to change with the times.
Sure.
So I would offer that.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Rogers, any thoughts or questions?
I don't have any questions. I'll give you some comments, though.
Sure.
Um, that particular part of Greenfield on the west side, we've already established, it is somewhat of a, like a business area from the corners during the gas station going south a quarter mile, whatever, and across streets of the residential apartments. And we did have a case, uh, with the, the law firm.
That's right.
Um, so, this is a very cool concept. Um, I'm, I'm very pro, pro-business, pro creativity, uh, when it comes to looking at things. The other options that you're showing visually, you know, I mean, do you have to adorn it all four sides? I don't know. I don't, it depends on what perspective you're looking at it.
So the one, sorry to interrupt, the one without the robot, um, only has the verbiage on the side facing Greenfield, yes, and then on the front for instructions.
What's the best way to present it, in your opinion?
Say that again?
What is the best way to present this vending machine? All four sides or, or the other options that you're suggesting? Are you suggesting these options because you're afraid that maybe we won't like all four sides,[1766.39] four sides and you're giving us a second way to look at it? Or is this a better way to look at it?
Yeah, I understand your question. From a business standpoint, all four sides, people are pulling into the parking lot, maybe the backside because that just faces my neighbor, so maybe we kill that, but I think the two sides people are pulling in because right now they're pulling in and they're saying, what is that thing? So we have a lot of existing customers that, as I said, you know, have been coming for many, many years. And so I think something identifying it, letting them know what it is so they don't walk up and try and withdraw money from it. So I think the backside is not necessary, the one that faces our neighbor. I would agree with that. But I would implore you that three sides would be the best accommodation for us, and two sides, the front facing our building with instructions, and at least some identifying factors to the road to not create that confusion, I think would be the best compromise.
Okay, so, you know, I, I want you to be able to promote your product. It is basically a permanent fixture. It's not like a hot dog vending cart. And, you know, and I also consider the fact that Capri Pizza's been there for over half a century, and I'm not in, I'm, I'm not into, you know, debilitating, you know, progressive ways to do business that are truly what our times are changing. As you alluded to with getting employees to even work at the restaurant, this could be an option for, for a multitude of reasons.
We may not be, I mean, without this technology, we may not be here. And that's another thing, I mean.
You know, I, I agree with you.
Yeah, we operate at a loss every month to keep the employees going, and I've been able, actually been able to give the employees a raise because they're now gonna be making pizzas for this machine. So every pizza they make while they're there, they get a little bonus. And I've actually been able to hire another employee, and, you know, for the last year, that's been just nearly impossible. They were actually excited about doing this, where they said, I'm gonna come work at a pizza shop. So it's, it's actually kind of been exciting and reinvigorated our staff as well.
I'm picturing this like a Wizard of Oz inside there when the machine goes wrong and you order the pizza and somebody starts banging on the side and the guy comes out, but.
So it's, it's an actual robot that picks up the pizza, pulls it out of the box, puts it into the oven, takes it out, puts it back in the box. So there's machines like this that exist in Jackson and Arbor, actually here in Michigan, but they all use microwaves. And all I can say is, I'm a pizza guy, and you can't eat microwave pizza. This is true, I mean, I invite you all to come try it. This is real pizza. It's something special.
Yeah, it sounds fantastic. I've heard of a company that tried making a French fry machine many years ago. It was called Tasty Fries.
Yeah, I've heard of it.
Yeah, they, they didn't get off the ground, but it was a great concept.
You've got fifteen hundred of these in Europe that have been there for over ten years. So it's really got a proven track record. There's about three hundred machines in Canada, and we just, we were right on it. We saw the opportunity and we're super excited to bring it here.
This is the first of its kind?
In the US, yeah.
Yeah, so Southfield is now becoming, you know.
Yeah, I mean, D Business is doing an article, Crane's is doing an article, we've got the news coming out, so I mean, there's a lot of positivity that comes. And like I said, we, when we manufacture the pizzas, we can't do it out of the shop, so we have to open what's called the topping kitchen. We're partnering with a local cookie company, a local crust manufacturer, all in one facility that I already told, it's gotta be in Southfield. That's where I'm at. So we're excited about that, too.
So how many pizzas are, before it has to be restocked?
Ninety-six.
Ninety?
Yeah. It's a, it's a really, really cool machine, and it's got two ovens, so two people can get a pizza at once.
Oh.
Yeah, and it's not just pizza. So we perfected macaroni and cheese, pretzel sticks, a lot of different options in there.
Very cool.
So it's also been a lot of fun, I'll tell you.
All that, okay. Mr. Havas?
So these.
Oh, I'm sorry, Miss Lebit, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, number one, you are doing other marketing, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're just waiting for approval of this building so that you can let people know what it is gonna look like?
I, yes, I wanna make sure when people come out, A, they have a positive experience, and B, they understand what they're using and how they're using it. So before we go out and publicize it, I wanna make sure that the machine is aesthetically pleasurable and offers the proper instructions on it. Right now, it's, it's just a black box, yeah.
Is Capri preparing, pre-preparing the things that go inside?
Yes, ma'am.
And is there a pizza oven in there?
There are two pizza ovens and a large refrigerator. So items live in the refrigerator for up to five days. The machine is M.D.R. approved, so who manages licensing for vending machines, Oakland County Health Department's been out to look at it. We have UL and NSA certification, so everyone, including planning, you know, Inspector Wilkins has been great to work with, planning's been great. This is really the, everything's done. We cut electrical underground, we added a bike rack, we really, we've put a lot into this, and this is really the first kind of, you know, hurdle that we've hit, and I was just, you know, hoping we could get over it together.
Is this basically a wrap? My questions didn't have anything to do with signage, but I was just.
Yeah, no, we, we gotta understand it. It's important to understand it.
Well, the marketing part did have to do with signage.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, Mr. Havas?
No, I think it's all very interesting. I mean, I don't have any further questions. I mean, maybe one of the less busy options might be preferable, but I don't, no, I don't have any further comments on it.
Okay. So what do we, what is the board's, what are people thinking? Do we like the proposed busy one, but that does clearly identify what is, can be prepared in the machine? Or the single robot option that he gave us, or the three robot option?
I personally like the three, I mean, that's why I asked him, what's, what's the best for them in their perspective, you know, the three, the three sides?
The three sides?
And having one blank side that faces an area that's, you know.
So that would be the option you're seeing, and we would just get rid of that backside to the left? Because you can't see that from Greenfield anyways.
Right.
Yeah, because our neighbors are both set to the sidewalk and we're set back.
So do you have any concern about this getting wildly popular in your parking lot and not being large enough?
So.
At two o'clock in the morning?
Yeah, I think because you're putting out an item every three minutes, two people can order at once, and we are developing an app that will geofence people in so they can order in advance. The app will know when they're, say, fifty feet from the machine, they can push their order, and then they can come and it'll be waiting ready for them.
Okay.
So, I mean, we run a, we run a pretty busy carryout on Friday, Saturday nights. The weeks aren't so busy, and we've managed pretty well to this point.
Okay.
I've also got great neighbors, and I'm also one of my own neighbors.
Yeah.
So I think I could definitely speak with them. My neighbors to the left, insurance repair pros, they use our parking before three o'clock to store some of their vehicles, so I think they would be welcome at two AM to people parking in the lot as well.
Okay, okay. All right, so does it sound like the board's position is that we are interested in approving the request for signage of this vending machine and considering approving the three robot, three-side option that was presented tonight? Does that seem like where the board is?
That's where I'm at.
That's where you're at? I'm, I'm agreeable to that.
Yeah.
Is this one?
That's, yeah.
It would be the option you see on the board without the far-left back.
Yeah.
You okay with that, Mr. Havas?
Yep, yeah.
Miss Lebit, is that okay?
Madam Chair, if I may, if, if this does get approved, that it'd be part of a stipulation that they would have to meet all the requirements of the building code for the installation?
Okay.
And that they would have to get all the approvals from the Health Department and the Department of Agriculture.
But that's not signage related, right? They've already done that for the installation, right?
I'm, I'm not, not from the Department of Agriculture. I don't believe we've had their approval. I spoke to the Department of Agriculture, and they've looked at the one in the other one, and that's the only one they've seen. And I, and when I talked to their inspector, he said he hasn't been to this site yet, so he hasn't inspected it, so.
Okay.
As long as the, the appellant knows that that's required.
Yeah, I mean, that's required by the state. So I, currently, they have reviewed the plans of the machine, they have reviewed images of the machine, all the safety that you, all the NSA guidelines. They are scheduled to come out later this week. If I don't get that approval, none of this means anything. My understanding, I have in writing for him, that he has no objections to the machine from Inspector Delon.
And do you expect the wrap to last indefinitely? Do you have a time?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I know wrapped cars last for, you know, four or five years. You know, we invested a lot into this branding, so I don't think we have any intention of changing it.
Okay.
So, yeah, we hope this machine's gonna be out there for a long time.
Okay. All right, so I guess I am looking for a motion to approve the request for wall signage in the form of a wrap on this unique vending machine located at three oh seven three five Greenfield, Sidwell Parcel two four one two two three zero zero two four, Zone B three General Business, with the stipulation that the wrap meets the Michigan Building Code for sign installation.
Can I say so moved?
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Good luck, we're excited about it.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, will the city call the next case, please?
Case number twenty-two dash sixteen. The appellant, Jeffrey Jonah Builder, representing JQK Properties, owner is requesting the following variance from the board. A rear yard setback variance of eleven feet of rear yard setback, fifteen feet required, four feet proposed for the construction of a staircase. The property is located on the north side of Northwestern Highway between Franklin Road and Rosemont Drive at two nine four 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 Northwestern Highway, Sidwell Parcel two four zero seven three two six zero zero eight, Zone B three General Business. This appeals to section five point one nine four, article twenty-two, chapter forty-five of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Hi, is the appellant here? Hi there. If you could just step to the microphone, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Jeffrey Jonah, two nine four 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 Northwestern Highway.
Perfect, and can you explain to us what you're asking for and why?
We're asking for a staircase and a setback, pretty much, yep. And the reason is because I'm representing the owner, and he operates a mortgage company there, and he wants to create several, pretty much, he wants his staffing to be more relaxed at work, create a positive environment, he'll take lunch breaks, you know, physical health, mental health, things along those lines.
Okay. All right, will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Madam Chair. With regard to ZBA case twenty-two dash one six, the appellant, Jeffrey Jonah Builder, representing JQK Properties, owner is requesting the following variance from the board. A rear yard setback variance of ten feet, five, ten point five feet of rear yard setback, fifteen feet required, fourteen point five feet proposed for the construction of an exterior staircase. Please note this is a change from the legal notice. Property is located on the north side of Northwestern Highway between Franklin Road and Rosemont Drive at two nine four 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 Northwestern Highway, Sidwell Parcel two four zero seven three two six zero zero eight, Zone B three General Business. Subject property is currently developed with the Extreme Loans Office Building. Property of the north is Zoned R-two Single Family Residential and is developed with the Chelsea Crossing Townhouses. Properties to the east, west, and south across Northwestern Highway are Zoned B three General Business and are developed with the Market Street Shops Plaza, Very Fine Liquor and Wine, and a multi-tenant medical office building respectively. Total site contains one point two acres of land with approximately one hundred and fifty-seven point eight nine feet of frontage along Northwestern Highway, and depth ranging from four hundred and seven point five to five hundred and five point six six feet. The approved site plan reflects an exterior metal stairway of approximately two hundred and forty square feet, providing egress to the top of a rooftop deck patio, which is being provided for Extreme Loan employees only. Based on the layout and construction of the existing building, it would be difficult from a building code perspective to reconfigure the interior to provide rooftop access from the inside of the building. No complaints were received from adjacent property owners regarding the proposed rooftop deck or exterior stairway as part of either the Planning Commission or City Council meetings. Subject property is separated from the residential property to the north by a six-foot masonry wall and densely tree buffer. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to add at this point?
Don't, said perfectly.
Okay, sounds good. The city read the staff recommendation, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We recommend favorable consideration of the rear yard setback variance based on the following. Based on the layout and construction of the existing building, it would be difficult from a building code perspective to reconfigure the interior to provide rooftop access from the inside of the building. Proposed rear yard setback variance will have minimal adverse effects on surrounding properties. Subject property is separated from residential property to the north by a masonry, six-foot masonry wall and densely tree buffer. Further, no complaints were made from adjacent property owners as part of either the Planning Commission or City Council meetings. Based on fast-moving traffic along Northwestern Highway and the proximity of the staircase from the front property line, the stairway will be mostly, if not completely, imperceivable from vehicular traffic traveling along Northwestern Highway.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else you wanna add at this point?
No.
Okay, so we are required to open public comment, even though I see absolutely no one behind you, so we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Friedman?
I have no issues with it, I'd go along with the city.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Havas?
I have no issues either, it's fine with me.
Okay, sounds good. Mr. Rogers?
I have no issues at all, either.
Thank you, Miss Lebit?
Neither have I.
All right, sounds good. The only question I had is, the staircase is gonna be along the rear of the building, right?
Correct.
It seems heavily wooded back there. Is it, is it not that heavily wooded?
No, no.
It just appears that way? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah.
All right, okay. It's, you know, mosquito-infested rooftop, not my desirable place to hang out, but, you know, I'm sure it'll be fine. Okay, no, I, I mean, in general, your request is fine. I don't have any concerns with the request, so. Mr. Havas, you wanna make a motion?
Sure. This is in regards to ZBA case twenty-two dash sixteen. The appellant, Jeffrey Jonah Builder, representing JQK Properties, owner is requesting the following variance from the board. A year, rear yard setback variance of ten point five feet of rear yard setback, fifteen feet required, four point five feet proposed for the construction of an exterior staircase. The property is located on the north side of Northwestern Highway between Franklin Road and Rosemont Drive at two nine four 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 Northwestern Highway, Sidwell Parcel two four zero seven three two zero six zero zero eight, Zone B three General Business. I move to approve this waiver based on the following. Based on the layout and construction of the existing building, it would be difficult from a building code perspective to reconfigure the interior to provide rooftop access from the inside of the building. The proposed rear yard setback variance will have minimal adverse effects on the surrounding properties. The subject property is separated from the residential property to the north by a six-foot masonry wall and densely tree buffer. Further, no complaints were made by the adjacent property owners as part of either the Planning Commission or City Council meetings. Based on the fast-moving traffic along Northwestern Highway and the proximity of the staircase from the front property line, staircase will be mostly, if not completely, imperceivable by vehicular traffic traveling along Northwestern Highway.
Great, thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, your request is granted. So just continue to work with the Building Department, Planning Department to get your permits.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, that concludes our public hearing. So it looks like we have one set of minutes to approve from June 21st. Did anyone see any changes or corrections?
I did not.
Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the June 21st minutes as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then discussion of our next meeting on August 16th. This is unique. Who would like to speak to this? We don't know what it is yet? Okay.
Brianna, Mike.
No, if I may, get through the chair. It's kind of a unique circumstance and situation. Maple Tree Apartments, which currently is on Franklin Road. Back in 1978, the Zoning Board of Appeals at the time allowed for a waiver of an 835-foot-long sidewalk. If you know the area, Matrot and Franklin Road. At the time that Maple Tree Apartments was being constructed, Matrot was just a dirt road. So at that time, the Zoning Board of Appeals stated that there's no construction here, it's a dirt road, in essence, kicking the can down, down the lane with regard to a sidewalk. Zoning Board of Appeals didn't outright waive the requirement. And what they stated was, at a future time when the city decides, the property owner was supposed to construct the sidewalk. That was forty years ago.
Okay.
A lot of things have happened in that area over time. Numerous housing developments have gone in off of Matrot and off of Pebble Creek Parkway. And when Maple Tree came in for their latest proposal, the city stated that it's now time to put in the sidewalk.
Okay.
Which the developer has balked at and said, basically, he does not want to do. So what the, was going to be coming before the board is an interpretation of the Zoning Board of Appeals' recommendation back in 1978.
Okay, and do we have minutes to review? What do we have from the media, we do, okay, okay.
Yeah, we, we will make sure that we provide all the necessary information for you to get a history of what had occurred back in seventy-eight. I will also note that in 1981, the developer at the time stated he didn't want to put the wall in it, or the sidewalk in at all. So while the Zoning Board of Appeals said, yeah, let's kick the can down the road, the developer at the time agreed with that. In eighty-one, he said he didn't want to put it in at all. Which then required a bond that the Zoning Board of Appeals stated that he would have to post. We did not see any evidence a bond was ever posted for this. But really, what we're looking for is an interpretation by you as to the, the direction, the, the response from the Zoning Board of Appeals back in nineteen seventy-eight. It could be very difficult, obviously, it was forty years ago.
Okay, and what is the developer, what project is the developer presenting now at that site?
Yeah, so he is actually, there's a, a small apartment building at the very back corner of his property that he is, now wants to tear down and put in new four-unit development.
Oh, okay.
Over there, so that's what triggered the requirement now for that, the sidewalk he put in.
I see, okay.
And again, we'll have all the information that you need to, to make a decision at that meeting.
Seems to be a month of unique, new situations. Yes, ma'am.
Is this the same developer?
It's the same, at the, it's a different developer from the developer from nineteen seventy-eight. Yeah, yeah, so it's a completely different owner and developer.
Okay, and is any of this in the title work?
That's a good question. The, the approved site plans actually note right on them that the, the sidewalk would be waived and actually noted the actual ZBA case on it. So we have site plans that note the waiver that was required or that was given by the Zoning Board of Appeals to construct at a later date. There was also a requirement, we do have a, a letter of covenant that was also, also signed by the previous developer, stating that he would put the wall, or put the sidewalk in when the city required it.
Is that the same one that was going to do the bond as well?
Correct, yes.
And, and my third part of my question is, has the city attorney weighed in on this?
Dawn King, our, our city attorney, is well aware of it. And thus, the reason why she actually is, is the one who recommended coming back before the Zoning Board of Appeals for an interpretation.
Is that still within our purview? If a developer, if a development was presented and they didn't want to add sidewalks, that it would come to, we've never had a case like that.
Yeah, I, I would say yes, again, because the Zoning Board of Appeals made the initial.
I'm thinking a whole new development, vacant land.
Yeah.
Somebody wants to build a thousand unit and doesn't want to put a sidewalk in. Would that come to us now? Is that under our?
If the Zoning Board of Appeals at the time had, had actually recommended a waiver and basically stated that in the future, you'll put it in when the city decides, I would say yes.
So we'd be pulling our, our waiver we granted in nineteen seventy, whatever, if, if we interpret that, that it required a sidewalk to be put in at a later date, we'd be pulling that original waiver? Okay.
Yeah, I, I will say it's, it's a, in all of my years here with the city, it's the first time I have heard this one as well. And again, I think it was a time in which the ZBA looked at it and said, there's no development here, why should we even put a sidewalk in? I think the ZBA recognized that there could be development in the future in which that sidewalk would then be beneficial to the residents or whoever would be living in that particular area. And that's why they stated when the city decided, at, at a time when that particular area became more developed, then we would require the sidewalk. So I think that was good forethinking by the ZBA at the time to not just outright waive it, but to say, okay, we understand there's nothing going on here, but there could be in the future, therefore, let's build the sidewalk at a later date.
And that was why I asked the question about the title work, because each time someone develops, they do research. And so this should not be new.
Right.
And this is just a person who's saying, I'm not going to do it. What do you think?
And the ZBA case, the, the, yeah, the waiver stays with the property forever.
They would know about it. So it's just, that's what I'd say, is there a practical reasons not to have the sidewalk?
Right.
Other than financial? So.
And if I may, through the chair, to, to Mr. Rogers, that's exactly what he has, he has stated is, it's, it's a cost factor for him, it's an expense. And as you know, the ZBA doesn't look at financial reasons for, reasons for giving waivers.
Do we know if there's been any accidents in that area? Maybe that's something we should look at as well?
Yeah, that, that I don't know, but I'd be, I'd be happy to follow. Yeah, I'd be happy to follow up with the, with the police department on that.
On the road, right? So I think that might be helpful as well. Have we missed, I'm sorry, not missed, are, are we at the deadline for that meeting? Could we have other items added to that?
Thank you for bringing that up. So we did have a case meet the deadline yesterday. It's going to be twenty-two dash twenty-one for a residential fence in the double-frontage yard. You guys is favorite.
I'm so surprised to hear that.
And if I may, through the chair, to that point, we have, the Planning Department is well aware of the issues with these double fronts. So we are looking at that with a possible change to the zoning ordinance.
Okay, great, we, we would be there to support you.
Yeah, and, and again, when, when it comes to the point where the Zoning Board of Appeals is issuing waivers on the same thing over and over again, then maybe we need to be looking at the zoning ordinance and making a change there.
Yeah, that's the one, and it's costing our residents money to ask for something that we are, you know, happy to get, so. Okay, any miscellaneous from anyone? Okay, then I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.